Good evening and welcome to the regular session of Finley City Council. Tonight's meeting on December 20th, 2022, we will start this evening's meeting with roll call, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Frischie?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Boomer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
And Mr. Wobser.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. I will accept a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes. Mr. Slough?
I would make a motion to approve the previous council minutes.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The minutes are approved. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir, we have an add-on letter from Fire Chief Eberly concerning emergency repairs for Engine One, and also corresponding ordinance 2022-146 for those emergency repairs to Engine One, that's added on, and removals of, two removal items, letter from Mayor Mern concerning Indigent Defense Services, and ordinance 2022-144, so I had moved that the two be added and the two be removed.
Second, Mr. Baumann, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the changes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? They are adopted. We have no proclamations, we have no recognition or retirement resolutions, we have no petitions, we have three oral communications. We're going to start with Mr. Tom Ross from 314 Third Street. And he'd like to speak about the strategic plan and drugs. Ms. Ross, you've been here a number of times, you understand you have four minutes, I will let you know when your four minutes is up.
Is the red light on?
It is now, can you hear me? Thank you. Good evening to everyone, my name's Tom Ross, I'm president of the Department Association here in Finley, and I'm here tonight just to briefly touch on two points. The first is, I really think this administration is out of touch with the wants and needs of this community, and unfortunately for the second one, I'm here to deliver a rather harsh message, so do bear with me, let's talk about out of touch with the wants and needs of this community. Finley has a homeless problem, as you well know, there are homeless people in our streets, there are homeless people sleeping on the church steps, and it's all drug-related, everybody knows that part two. Not only do we have a homeless problem, we have a crime problem. Unfortunately for Finley, our crime record is higher than our sister city in Fosteria for the fifth year in a row, again, all drug-related, continues to hear the same thing, don't we? And while we're talking about that, let's talk about drugs. There was an article in the paper a few days ago about drugs, fentanyl, heroin, all sorts of things are killing our families, disrupting our city, it's on our streets everywhere, and it's a serious problem in this community. And the problem I have is this, we have the single biggest threat to our community in the history of the community, drugs, and what are you folks focusing on? You put together a team and spend a bunch of money on consultants, tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands, I don't even know, we'll find out soon enough, put all this team together and pat each other on the back and tell each other how great your ideas are, and how you're going to focus on fixing this community, and you come up with the plan that's going to hit the bad guys right in the face, we're going to take them on and we're going to destroy an entire industry, we're just going to wipe it out, man, we're coming after you, we're going to take care of those dr- whoops, wait, I'm sorry, not drug dealers, that's different community, you're going after landlords, you're going to destroy an entire industry with this strategic plan, while drugs run rampant in our streets. I think you have lost your focus, I think you don't realize what's important to this community, I would love to be a fly on the wall when you folks are getting together after you do all your strategic planning, or whatever it is that you do, wherever it is you go, the country club or whatever, and talk to each other, because you must only talk to the same 25 people, because if you took a walk out on Finley City streets, go down to Third Street where I live, and knock on a door and say, hey, we're going to spend $100,000 on a strategic plan that doesn't address drugs, we're going to spend it on destroying landlords in this community, we're going to run them out of town, you'd get punched in the nose, wouldn't you? And you should, because you're not focusing on what's important to this community, you're out of touch with reality. Now, unfortunately, you're not even, you're not even smart enough to come up with your own ideas, for heaven's sakes, all you did was resurrect the Tony A Reidy Vision document from 20 years ago, and knocked the dust off it and changed the colors of the plan, for heaven's sakes, folks, come on, I mean, that guy's probably dead, and half the people that wrote that plan are dead or moved on from this community, they don't know, they're not even around here, so please, please, focus on what's important in this community. All right, here comes the message, and I hate to do this, but it is what it is, if that plan comes out of committee, if it comes out of committee, all the committee members, I hate to say this, are going to be held accountable, every elected person that votes for that to come out of committee will be held accountable, Landlords Association will use every resource we have at our disposal, and let me tell you, every time you rattle your saber on things about housing in this community, our numbers grow, and grow, and grow, you're our greatest advocate. So if it comes out of committee, and it hits this floor, and you vote on it, every single elected official that votes yes on that strategic plan will also be held accountable, I'm sorry to say it, folks, but you brought us to this point, we didn't, we wanted to be left alone and run our businesses and make a living, you brought us to this point, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ross?
Any questions for Mr. Ross? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Katie Erickson, 1025 West Sandusky Street, she'd also like to talk about the strategic plan.
All right, mic still on? All right. All right, good evening, thank you everyone for giving me this opportunity here, so my name is Katie Erickson, my husband and I have, we moved here in 2007 with the intention of staying three to four years, we're still here, and one of the reasons that has kept us in this community is the opportunities we've had to purchase multiple homes that we maintain as rental properties. We currently own seven houses in Finley, including the one we live in, and so we're not big-time landlords, but we maintain our properties well, and we've completely remodeled two of the properties, thus improving their value for the community. Two of the sections of the proposed strategic plan, which I have looked at in depth, two of these sections appear to directly target private landlords such as myself, and that's what I want to speak to tonight, there's primarily sections 1.5, 1.6, the vacant property registry, the land bank, the rental property registration program, the adoption of more housing codes, expanding the metro housing program, and other things are directly targeting landlords such as myself in a negative way. So I'm assuming that these are likely targeting specific properties or specific landlords, but I cannot help but be threatened by these, just the fact that this could get passed threatens the income for my household from our rental properties, and the places to live that all of our tenants have, and this threatens our ability to be productive members of this community that my husband and I have adopted as our homes. There are pieces of the overall plan that I support, but lumping everything into this one big plan does not allow the opportunity for the public to look at each piece individually, pass some parts, maybe some parts not as good, what does the actual community want? So what this plan looks like to me is a way for the government of this city to gain control over private landlords such as myself, and that would hinder my ability to function as a private landlord in this community. My goal as a landlord is to help people have a great experience living in this city, whether for a short time or a long time, and this, elements of this plan look like that could make that not happen, and that would be a struggle for landlords as well as tenants. Items in this plan that would potentially cause my costs as a landlord to go up would just serve to raise rents, as I would be forced to pass those costs on to my tenants, and I think we know that we don't want to be raising rents to an amount that people are not able to afford. So the fact that this, the pieces of this plan target private landlords such as myself appears to be discriminating against one particular group of people, and I cannot support that, and I hope you all cannot either, thank you for your time.
Are there any questions for Ms. Erickson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next oral communication is from Jamie Cunningham. Jamie lives at 208 Township Road 14 in Van Buren, she'd like to speak about the elements of the strategic plan.
Yeah, I'll be brief, I reiterate and agree with everything that Tom and Katie said. Russ and I have been in this community as real estate investors for 33 years, and we have done the fairest business that we can, we treat our rental tenants as well as we can, we believe in doing things by the book, and we feel that these proposed regulations, a lot of this information isn't even yet known to me, because I'm just coming by it, but it's, it's very vague, and I think that without details, it does a disservice to the people. As a taxpayer, you know, obviously we all feel that we, we pay enough, but how is this going to be paid for? I mean, they, they pointed out the fact that we have lots of issues in Finley that need to be addressed, but, you know, how is this going to be paid for? Because when you're talking about funding the numerous programs that are being proposed, it has to be paid, and that's only going to happen by the taxpayer, and as a real estate investor, we pay a lot of taxes, and it is true, Katie said we have to pass that cost on to the rental tenants, and Russ and I, I can't speak for others, we try to keep our rent rates fixed, I would like to see taxes fixed, I really think that as an elected official, no matter your position, you should do your best to be fiscally responsible with the taxes that are already generated. I'll close with that, because I think there's still a lot of information that needs to be gathered, but I agree that Tom said it right, that if this is proposed, that, you know, we are definitely going to defend our position, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Cunningham? Thank you. Okay, that concludes our oral communications, we will now move on to, there's, I'm sorry, there's no written communications, we will now move on to reports of municipal officers and departments.
Finley Fire Department Activities Report for November 2022.
Questions or comments, report to be filed.
Finley Municipal Court Activities Report for November 2022.
Questions or comments, report to be filed.
Finley Police Department Activities Report for November 2022.
Questions or comments, report to be filed.
Financial summary, summary financial reports for November 30th, 2022.
Questions or comments, report to be filed.
Treasurers Reconciliation Report for November 30th, 2022.
Questions or comments, report to be filed.
Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes for November 10th, 2022.
Questions or comments, minutes to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Hancock Public Health Contract Renewal.
Questions or comments, letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Emergency Management Services.
Questions or comments, letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Airport Operations Coordinator Salary Increase.
Questions or comments, letter to, oh, Ms. Frischie.
Mayor, with this request, I'm not an easy person to support going outside the allowable, and I just, did I just look at the wrong thing? No, I didn't, okay. Tell me, the person that's in the position, what additional they're taking on, or what, what makes you want to go outside the norm?
Yeah, so, when you were not on council, we created this position and moved Kyle Inbody from zoning into the position, at that time, we did not modify his pay, we wanted to give it a trial, make sure that all went well, so now, as we have, he's come into the position, he's doing an incredible job of helping grow the airport's influence, both supporting city operations and the, the community at large, with that, we've looked at the similar positions, individuals in this position, and the salaries that are appropriate, and felt it was more appropriate to increase his salary, as you would see, you know, our, our standard is the 8% that we can't go beyond, so with it being 18, we did have to come to you all, but I still believe it's very much in line, both with the position, the responsibilities, and the value that he's adding to the city in that role.
And then the additional increase that we did across the board is on top of that, or no?
No, this would be separate of that.
So he would give both?
Yes. Right, I'm speaking, I was going to say, I started to say one thing, and then he looked at me different, the total would be 18, so that would include the 6%, sorry, hearing two words at the same time made me speak the wrong one. You're fine.
Mr. Russell?
So, to clarify, the, when we created the position, the initial salary structure was simply his zoning, salary structure moved over into the airport without doing the salary, in essence, the salary survey, and, and now, now that we, we see the value of the position, the salary survey has been done, and that's what's being proposed.
Correct, and to, and to further clarify back to Holly, it's a total of 18, it's not 18 plus 6.
And then the job description and the experience is still new to him?
No, no, he has an aviation background, he has his pilot's license, in the letter, as we, I believe we mentioned, kind of his background, he got his pilot's license at 17, he has been a pilot, he has been a passion, passionately involved in the aviation industry here locally, he had wanted to get involved with the airport, kind of when he joined the City of Finley team, and we just didn't have the opportunity, so then this was created to kind of build upon that.
And he was under the impression when he transitioned that he would be seeing a significant change?
There was no guarantees, obviously, at that time, but we did have the understanding that him staying at his existing salary was under the market value of the role.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mayor. Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Washington Avenue Storm Sewer Upgrade Project Number 35512100.
Questions or comments, letter to be filed.
Letter from City Auditor Stayshack regarding Year End Items to Transfer and Appropriate, appropriate?
My question is, I hopefully do not want Denise to have to read every single one of these, hopefully you've had time to review them.
Oh, first paragraph.
Okay, one moment, we're going to read the first paragraph, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Russell.
I do apologize, it does say, "It is respectfully requested that the first paragraph of this letter be read into the council record, the following accounts require an appropriation or a transfer for this budget year, so that the city may remain in compliance with Ohio Revised Code and Audit, it is important that the rules be suspended and the legislation for these transfers be passed at your December 20th meeting in order to remain in compliance. I have listed below the amount of each request and the corresponding reason for the appropriation or transfer."
Questions or comments, letter to be filed.
And, add-on, letter from Fire Chief Eberly regarding Emergency Repairs for Fire Engine One.
Questions or comments, letter to be filed. Committee reports.
Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request from First United Church of Christ to rezon Zero Greendale Avenue, parcel number 210001032996, from R1 Residential to O1 Offices and Institutions, we recommend approval as requested.
Mr. Baumann?
Make a motion, we accept the committee's report.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The committee report is adopted.
Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request from Mayor Mern and Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Cordanyer to discuss potential zoning code amendments, we recommend review of proposed zoning code changes by the Planning and Zoning Committee and further discussions in January 2023.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. Slough, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? The committee report is adopted.
The Planning and Zoning Committee to whom was referred a request to discuss the annexation plan, we recommend continued planning of rollout of annexation efforts.
Mr. Baumann?
I make the motion, we accept the committee's reports.
Second, Mr. Slough, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? The committee report is adopted. Legislation, we'll start with resolution.
First reading for Resolution 33, 2022, a resolution transferring funds within appropriated funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Slough?
I would move for adoption of the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the resolution.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution 033-2022, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay?
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Frischie? Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, ordinances.
Third reading for Ordinance 2022-127, and Ordinance Appropriating Funds and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Greeno?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2022-127.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay?
Ms. Frischie? Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki? And Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2022-128, and Ordinance Accepting and Approving an Application for the Annexation of Territory Situated in the Township of Allen, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and Being in Part of Section 36 Township 2 North, Range 10 East, A tract of land consisting of 3.978 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Martik Investments Incorporated Annexation.
Mr. Baumann?
Move for adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-128.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay?
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman? Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki? Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Frischie?
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2022-129, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 1100 et cetera of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Finley, Ohio, known as a zoning code, by zoning the following described property as M2 multifamily high density, here and after referred to as the Martik Investments Annexation.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2022-129.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion? Ms. Frischie?
My memory might be off, but don't we usually do a public hearing on, since there's an annex and a rezone, no?
We did not do one, I think she is correct.
Per Denise, we normally do one, and we did not do one, so I'm not sure if we could pass this without one.
Should this be tabled until?
So should we back up on the previous?
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah, we'll either have to table it until that's done, so.
But both, or one, Denise?
What do you mean, both?
Well, we just did 28, so does 28 and 29 need to, or just 29?
Yeah, not 28, 29 to rezone, we do need public hearing.
So the annexation, we don't need it just for the rezone?
And in order to have enough notice, it will have to be the second meeting of January.
Okay, Mr. Russell?
Move to table Ordinance 2022-129.
Second, Ms. Frischie, all those in favor of tabling the ordinance, say aye, aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay?
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Frischie?
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
The ordinance is tabled.
Sorry. Second reading for Ordinance 2022-132, and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2021009 to change the hours of operation for the designated outdoor refreshment area and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Baumann?
I, I guess I was kind of interested to see, you know, kind of hear from other council members, you know, with New Year's being around the corner, do we want to give this its third reading?
There's no discussion, you need to make a motion.
Per my agenda, it is its third reading.
Second.
Second. Second.
But I believe he, point of order, he needs to make a motion, there's no discussion without a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Frishy, for your comment, but we do that all the time. Um, Mr. Wobser.
I would make a motion that council's rules be suspended and this, uh, legislation be giving it, given its third reading, as listed.
Second, Mr. Baumann, all those in favor of suspending the rules and giving the ordinance its third reading, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Ms. Frish, or Mr. Baumann. Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Nay.
And Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
So four nays. Doesn't, the suspension does not pass?
The suspension does not pass.
Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Thirty Four. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. I think Mr. Russell might.
Oh, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, in a conversation with Jeremy, uh, there's some requirement from the state of Ohio to actually, uh, accept this, accept this, uh, funding and, and, um, in this fiscal year. And so we need to have this done tonight. For that reason, I would move that council's statutory rules be suspended and, uh, this ordinance be given its third reading.
Second, Ms. Warnicki, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough. Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The rules of council will be suspended and the clerk will give this its third reading.
Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Four.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Three Four.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion, Ms. Frishy.
Jeremy, I'm glad that Grant's speaking for you, but I'd like to hear from you better details.
So, with the timeline, sorry, with the timeline on this too, with ODOT, I have thirty days after the bid opening date as well to get contracts down to central office. So my timeline started as soon as we opened this bid. And then I have to get all the contracts fully signed, money appropriated, purchase orders on top of that. So, like what Mr. Russell was saying, we gotta get that money appropriated within to our project, so I have time to get all those contracts signed and sent down to central office. That's a requirement with ODOT, we do it with our Bright Road, or I guess, or Resurfacing Projects and all that, that's just their standard, we have to go by.
And that you started the, you started the project on what date, and what was the total amount, remind me?
Um, received, um, two point two million from ODOT, city funds is six hundred and sixty thousand, and the total project cost is two point seven four nine.
And you started when? When did we open the bid?
Um, November, so it was the day, the second reading in council, or it was the second meeting in November on council, it was open that day. But trying to get a letter out, push that day, it's very difficult to make sure we have the proper funding and working with the auditor's office and ginger on that, make sure we have the proper, it just didn't work out where we could get free.
Thank you for the detail.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of?
Yeah, this is.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Thirty Six. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Seven. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, question, uh, for thirty-six, thirty-seven, uh, excuse me, for thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, uh, with lead times and all, I'm assuming that, uh, that's something that's, um, necessary to get done tonight?
Yeah, I, I would prefer to get those through, uh, just 'cause we are looking at nine to ten months out on poles alone, that's not counting the other equipment with that, and with the price of stuff, you know, we're, our, our quotes are only good for so long. Um, so I like to get those moving, especially the, uh, Corey Street one, as everyone can see, that one was, was struck by a truck, so I'd like to get that replaced sooner and later. But, um, these, looking at what the poles are and stuff, they are needing repairs, so sooner we can get those, I mean, we're seeing more and more storms and stuff, so.
Is there any thought to, uh, buying inventory on something like this?
Yes and no, I mean, you pretty much gotta know your design of your full intersection, uh, because of your mast arm and all that kinda stuff before, so you pretty much have to get shop drawings for each intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Move the council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Three Seven.
Second, Mr. Greeno, oh, I'm sorry, second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give the ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Seven.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Eight. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greeno.
As, uh, what Jeremy stated, uh, I think we need to go ahead and get this one through, so I, I would like to see this ordinance get its third reading tonight.
Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Russell.
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
The rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Eight.
So, uh, Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Nine. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
I move that council's rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its third reading.
Second, Mr. Wobser, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye. The rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give the ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Thirty Nine.
Mr. Greeno.
Uh, move for adoption of Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Three Nine.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favors of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Hundred Forty. An ordinance amending ordinance number Twenty Twenty One Thirty Seven, authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hancock County Public Health to continue to provide backflow testing and repair of all city-owned facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Hey, Rob, can you, uh, speak to the, um, need for this tonight or not, and, um, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Got shocked there. Um, this contract does expire at the end of the year, um, it is a renewed contract that we had in place in the past, so would be beneficial to have it tonight. Um, the delay, why it wasn't to you prior to this, was we were working through some of the details, um, some edits of the contract, so that was hence the delay getting to you, so I apologize for that, so.
Mr. Wobser.
What would happen if we don't approve tonight, I'm, I struggle with approving, uh, something like this in, in one reading, so do we just, is a old contract, will it roll over until a new one's approved?
It, it will, it's, it's, it's a standardized process, um, no one's gonna do these January third, um, so I think we're in a good position, if you choose to have more than one reading, it could roll over, it would be fine.
Very good, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Hey, Rob.
Ms. Frishy.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go, so, backflows, so businesses have backflows, they have to get them tested and all of that every year. Why are we doing it differently, why are we having Hancock Public Health do ours? It says that, it says that they agree to maintain the database of the backflow systems, the inspection fee for all of our properties.
We are maintaining that because we have the capability through our water department.
Mm-hmm.
And they have the certified plumber on staff that's capable of doing the backflow, so it's mutually agreed upon.
So we don't have?
It's a, it's a specialized process.
Well, I, I know, I used to do backflows on my commercial businesses, but we could, we had plumbers that were certified through the city, you can get any contractor, so, so tell me why we're going to Hancock Public Health and not going to X Y Z plumber that is bonded through the city? And what's the difference in cost?
I don't have that information for you, this was an established contract, it was an agreement, we, as the city, pay for fifty-seven point seven percent of the budget for Hancock Public Health, so we work with them.
I know, now we're paying another twenty-four sixty.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm asking, so is this new?
It's a process that needs to be done. No.
And twenty twenty-one was not the first time we've had this?
Not to my, no, this isn't existing, this has been a process that's continued in the past, that, from the past.
May I add to it?
You may.
So if you, a couple years ago, we, the Hancock Public Health would maintain the database, they would do the communication with contractors in town and making sure, well, we already had that database. So what this agreement is both looking at just the structure of how we manage backflows in the city, so the City of Findlay maintaining that database and doing the reports and notification to the properties, hey, here's a reminder, as part of maintaining our system, you have a backflow in place, you need to get it tested and provide us the necessary paperwork. The contract that we have in place with public health is for them to check our system, make sure, because we shouldn't necessarily be checking ourselves' paperwork, obviously, but also making sure that we have the relationship in place, that public health is the public health entity that ensures people are following the proper process. They do have a, um, as you stated, they, you know, have a certified plumber already on their staff, the cost is not necessarily for them to be providing the service, this is for our understanding of how we're managing the system.
Any other questions or comments?
But we'll, we, we can provide you more information, a write-up on how the structure works and what the funds are for.
I would like to know what their cost is compared to us just having any certified bonded plumber do our side, I underst- I need more information and I don't, I'm glad there's not a rush on it.
Yep, not, not a rush, and I would say that, you know, I don't know the plumber's cost, but when we've looked at that in the past, this was a savings for the city, um, because it does cost typically, you're paying a hundred dollars a backflow, and obviously the city has a significant system, and Jim's telling me it's, you know, I think the, the fee alone is a hundred dollars plus then the fee for a plumber.
Well, I would like to see that, if you look into the difference.
Excuse me, I, I, everybody's talking out of turn, when you wanna talk, please address the president and I will then call on you as needed. Mr. Niemeyer, you had something to say? If not, I'm, I'm.
No, it is very expensive to have them tested every year, in my past businesses, so it has to be saving the city money, that's my opinion.
Okay. Ms. Frishy, have any other comments?
And that's what I say, so I would like to see that savings as well.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
There's no motion on that. First reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Forty One. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Hancock County Emergency Management Agency to maintain an emergency operation plan that will encompass all political subdivisions of Hancock County, pursue a professional development training program, and coordinate the emergency management activities of all the political subdivisions according to the duties and requirements of Section Fifty Five Zero Two Point Two Seven of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency. First reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Forty Two. An ordinance appropriating, or excuse me, an ordinance approving the requests of the City of Findlay, Ohio Administration to grant an additional ten percent salary increase to the Airport Operations Coordinator position, which would exceed the allotted eight percent of current codified ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Eighty One as amended of the City of Findlay, Ohio, known as a salary ordinance totaling an eighteen percent pay increase for the Twenty Twenty Three Wage Year and declaring an emergency. First reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty Two Dash One Forty Three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the creation of construction plans for the Washington Avenue Storm Sewer Upgrade, Project Number Three Five Five One Two One Zero Zero, appropriating and transferring funds there too and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, uh, you wanna speak towards the, you know, the timing on this project and the need for this legislation tonight?
Um, this one, I'm not in too much of a rush for, I mean, of course, if I need stuff drawn up, uh, 'cause we're doing the design in-house, we're having, uh, consultants do our drafting, boy, they can cover it and stuff like that. Uh, so it's kinda like everything else, I like to get stuff out early to get that, uh, cheaper price out there, um, but if you guys would've wanted to go, you know, and, uh, reading yourself, um, it should be fine, but if you wanna, you know, if you guys are willing to give it tonight, I can get those drafting services starting sooner and later.
Mr. Russell.
Does this, will this also include curbs and gutters on Washington down there, or is it just simply?
This is, no, this will not be curbing's gutter, um, we looked into that, but with the elevation of what the roadway is and the waterline stuff, it, that would be a major undertaking. We have to lower all the water lines and stuff, um, so we're going down through there, uh, addressing, uh, we've had some residents with some concerns and stuff, So we're going to address all the low spots, wet spots. Um, we're going back out there when it rains and all that kind of stuff to find the low areas as well, uh, to then find the, try to get all that as much as possible.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wobser.
So Jeremy, you're good with, uh, if we waited until at least the 3rd on this?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine.
I don't think the prices changed too much in the last month, last week of the year.
No, we have a quote on it and I mean, I don't think they're going to be starting.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Ordinance 2022-144 was removed from the agenda. First reading for ordinance 2022-145, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move that council statute of rules be suspended and ordinance 2022-145 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno. All those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell? Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give the ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2022-145, ordinance 2022-145.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-145.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2022-146, and ordinance, uh, ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into a contract with WW Williams Toledo located in LeMoyne, Ohio, for emergency repairs to Fire Engine One utilized by the city of Findlay Fire Department, appropriating funds thereto and declaring a real and present emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, council president, would it be out of order because they're requesting, um, action on this tonight to have the letter read into the record? I kind of wanted to do it and it slid by before I could. I think it's pertinent to let folks know, uh, what this is about and why this, uh, is going to get consideration tonight. So I, I think as long as there's a motion and a second.
That's a motion. Was that a motion? I'm sorry. Okay. Second, Mr. Greeno. All those in favor of reading the letter into the record, say aye. Any opposed name? Okay, we will read.
Findlay Fire Engine One is currently in re, in repair, in a repair facility to replace a head gasket. This was a planned repair and we have a purchase order in place for this. However, once repair work began, additional problems were found that are necessary to fix immediately. A cylinder head is warped and needs replacement and the EGR cooler is leaking and needs replaced as well. Currently, there are insufficient funds in the fire department operational budget to secure a purchase order for these repairs. The total estimate for these repairs are fifteen thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars thirty-one cents. I am requesting an allocation of four seventeen thousand into the fire department R&amp;M vehicle line IM 331200 for these repairs plus any additional items found. The apparatus will be out of service until these repairs are completed. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Frishy?
Chief, since you're here, do you want to come join the microphone for me? I have two questions for you. What year is Fire Engine One?
It's 2015.
And we ha, I know we talked in budget, we have, um, one of your men works on maintaining the vehicles. There was, none of this stuff was able to be seen?
Um, no, a repair like this is too big for a local, um, repair shop. Um, so when you replace a head gasket, you have to tear apart a decent amount of the motor to get to it. So stuff like that, I rely on mechanics to tell me what we can do, um, in-house or what we need to farm out.
So you just couldn't see that area? That's all I want to know.
Yeah, what we saw was a significant oil leak. So we knew there was, um, the head gasket was the problem. Turns out those, uh, at least the warps still on her head was the cause of the head gasket, the gasket problem. So we saw the result of it. We didn't see the root cause.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
Um, Ms. Frishy?
I make a motion to suspend ordinance 2022-146 and give it second and third readings.
Second, Mr. Wobser. Just, uh, all those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer?
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2022-146, ordinance 2022-146.
Ms. Warnicki?
Move to approve, um, ordinance 2022-146.
Second, Mr. Greeno. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough? Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy? Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business. Mr. Russell.
Yes, with, uh, these zoning code changes, uh, starting to work its way through the PNC committee. Um, ordinance 2022-110 really becomes unnecessary. Uh, if anything in that would, uh, be included in the, uh, uh, replant, uh, in the, uh, zoning code. So therefore I make a motion to remove ordinance 2022-110 from the agenda.
Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of the removal of the ordinance say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name. Are we, are we just, are we pulling, we're moving, pulling it from the agenda?
From any current and future agenda. Sorry to find an end of amendment, ten minutes. Sorry. That might have been confusing for some of you.
Yeah, the, the motion was to remove, uh, ordinance 2022-110 from this agenda. And all agendas going forward and taking no action in the running. It just dies on.
Thank, thank you. Second, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Frishy?
So first of all, you did a, you did a moratorium that's going to fall off so forever sounds pretty forever. So that moratorium is going to fall off and we're going to go back to normal? Is that what you're? What you just said.
Is that question directed at?
Well, I'm just trying to understand Green's motion of why, because otherwise it would just fall off at the end of the year, correct, Don? And it's not going to be under 2023.
That's not the case unless it's, uh, unless.
So if we remove it, the moratorium will fall off in six months for a small box. And then we're going to make all new legislation to remove it.
Mr. Ballman.
Yeah, that was my understanding that there were two separate items before. So the moratorium was a separate ordinance. And this was also separate. So one does not necessarily negate the other because they were separate. Removal of one does not negate the other because they were separate to begin with. And we approve that other.
Mr. Russell.
Yeah, the, the, uh, 2022-110 sets specific limits for the number of, uh, gaming parlors and, uh, small box retailers. It has nothing to do with the moratorium. And, uh, anything in 2022-110 would be in the zoning code. Therefore, it's unnecessary.
Ms. Frishy?
Yes, it's two separate. However, I guess you're hoping to have the new zoning code done and not need this. I see no need, but I will.
Any other questions or comments? So the motion is to remove it from current and future agendas. All those in favor of the motion say aye if your name is called. Those oppose name.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Mr. Russell. Vote. Thank you. Any other old business? Ms. Frishy?
About a month ago, um, we had a committee report regarding carriage walks and, um, it was tabled. I don't remember it becoming untabled. Um, people are still kind of hanging in limbo. I know Josh said he's supposed to get more information from the administration. Has that happened? I don't see it sitting here anymore either, Denise. So did it just disappear? I don't recall it. So I guess that, that's my question, because I never saw any information. When you tabled it, it was to get more information from the administration and I never heard anything from being on the committee of any new information or untabling it to discuss what the new information was. So if it hasn't, if you could check the minutes, I guess. And if we, so you're saying we untabled it?
Mr. Ballman?
Yeah, it was my understanding that we currently have someone contracted reviewing our ADA guidelines anyways. So that's why it was untabled and, and, and because we thought that it could be resolved through that process that was already in place. They're reviewing our ADA policies. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, who was that question directed to?
No, I just, that, that was my recollection. I, that's what I, I was thinking. I, I didn't know.
Hang, hang on a second. The mayor's got something that might clear this up.
Um, so it was removed and adopted. Um, there was additional dis, information shared with, um, chairman Palmer. Um, we are having the ADA review complete. They have shared that they would not be looking at the carriage walks policy. And so based off of all of the information that was provided and the discussion that was had, the city is going to continue with the practice as is, where the city is not putting them back in place. If someone else wants to put something in place, that would be their responsibility and their legal burden to carry.
Ms. Frishy?
So for future, for our committee, I would just appreciate any communication with administration to committee chair. It's communicated to all members of committee. And I'd just like for you to check, Denise, the vote on that. Because I know I would have voted no. So I just want to verify my vote.
I will find that and email that tomorrow.
Any other old business? New business? Mr. Russell.
Calling a planning and zoning meeting for January 5th, 2023 at noon. Uh, this is a week earlier than the normal schedule for the planning and zoning. Uh, we'll meet, meeting at noon, uh, and discussing the new zoning code changes.
Mr. Wobser?
I'd like to call a strategic planning committee for January 23, 23. So I see your January 25 and, uh, at five o'clock PM.
Other new busi-
Was his the 5th or the 25th?
Yeah. Clarify was, what was your date there, Grant?
January 5th.
And your date, Jeff? Thank you. Other new business? Mr. Niemeyer?
Well, Josh, did we vote? It was just untabled. We never voted on that committee report? The committee report?
Okay. Other new business? Mr. Russell.
Council, uh, the ad hoc committee on, uh, council rules met today. And one of the questions that was, uh, raised or an issue that, that we wanted feedback uh, was concerning the start time for future council meetings. Uh, there was some discussion about moving the meeting start time up to six o'clock or 6:30. And, uh, I ask if you have an opinion one way or the other on an earlier start time. If you could please let me know individually. And that goes for administration and any interested party to, uh, email me and let me, let me know. And then I will report back to the, uh, ad hoc committee. Uh, and we'll, and then we'll go from there. But so, uh, council start time at either six or 6:30 or seven o'clock. Kind of get people's view on that. Thank you.
Real quick, is there, was there a proposed, so they could be their yea or nay on that proposal? Or is it just that, let's keep it at seven unless you hear a majority say they'd like to change it?
It is simply a discussion item that we are seeking input from, uh, council and interested parties. And, uh, the, the committee didn't have a, um, the committee didn't have enough information to make a recommendation to the full council without getting more input. And this is the easiest way to ask for that in a public setting.
Okay, thank you. Please let him know your thoughts. Ms. Mayor.
Just a couple of quick items. Um, obviously, we're all wa, watching the storm very closely. I wish I could tell you that I, uh, have a lot of insight. But I did want to just remind you all that, um, if you could, please push out to your, your contacts and constituents or as you get questions asked, please remind them. Um, and we will be putting social media out that we will start with the primary main four-lane roads. We will then work our way out from there. This storm is going to be difficult, most likely for our team to manage because it's going to be so cold. And salt on the roadways does not work at such cold temperatures. Additionally, we are going to see a transition from rain into ice. So we are in communications with AEP and other agencies to make sure that if we do have power outages, um, you know, that those are addressed as quickly as possible. But my main message is please be safe and cautious. If you, if the roads don't look good and you can stay home, please stay home and give us time to address those appropriately. And, uh, prepare to be in your house for a couple of days if possible. You know, lots of Christmas movies and, uh, spending time with your family sounds like a good way to spend the holiday to me. Uh, but our 24 plows are ready to go and our team is ready to, uh, spend their holiday clearing our streets, which doesn't sound like a whole lot of bu, fun, but it's what they're prepared to do. So, any questions for me?
Will Santa's biggest elf, Mr. Hans, uh, assure the children of Findlay that Christmas will be here on the 25th?
Santa will still get to people's houses. Luckily, his sleigh works well in snow conditions. Yes. So, um, orig, I think it's going to be early Friday morning at this point in time. I think the rain is going to start Thursday evening. They were originally thinking it was going to start turning into ice mid-afternoon, but it seems like that has now been moved up. Right now, our best guess on snow is between five and eight inches of snow, which hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, in my opinion, hopefully it changes to snow more quickly because ice is really our main concern. Uh, additionally, there are warming stations that are going to be available. This, um, city mission is going to be available to individuals even if they aren't staying there currently through the evening. Um, I know there's going to be, I think Trinity Lutheran Church is another one, um, and the Salvation Army, a couple of folks. But again, we will continue to communicate that information out as we get it. Otherwise, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year if I do not see you before.
Any other new business? Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I want to give a shout out to, uh, Findlay High School. Last Thursday, they had their choir concert and those kids were absolutely amazing. Uh, my son is part of the, uh, freshman choir. They were great. And then Friday and Saturday, Findlay High School hosted the third largest girls wrestling tournament in the country. And it went off great. And those girls wrestled great. It was a great time. Uh, Grant and I, we both volunteered to help with the, a couple of the tables. Thoroughly enjoyed the experience there. Uh, Nate Wyrau and his staff and Ben Kieran, the wrestling coach, they hit it out of the park. It was great.
It's my understanding there were teams even from as far as Washington State at that, so. And they're, that, you know, there's plans to do it in the future and that's a real win-win for our area. Mr. Russell.
Yeah, to, to follow up on that, yes, there was two teams from Washington. I talked to both of their coaches. One was from South Central Washington and their girls were tough. Uh, Arizona, uh, the, uh, Illinois, I think the Chicago area. I think we had somebody up from Kentucky. Over 300 wrestlers, I think 40-some teams. And it was, it was a first-time event and to have it as big as it was and as competitive as it was. And the comments from all the, uh, the coaches that I talked to, none of, you know, all, all from across the state and, and, and all the out-of-towners was very favorable. Findlay did well. I think Deech Brothers did well that. Uh, because on Saturday after the wrestling, uh, there's no more weigh-ins. So, um, the, it, it was something and, and, and Josh is right, a tip of the hat to, uh, to Nate and, uh, Ben Kieran and the, and the, and their, their staffs to pull this off. They will be doing it again and they're looking to grow the tournament.
Other new business? Hearing none. I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday and safe, especially with the weather that's. And I will see you next year. I will mo, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Slough, second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay. We are adjourned.